All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:02 PM on Tuesday, January 21st, and we are here in the Nashua North Boardroom for the Policy Committee meeting. And I'm sorry, I was writing and talking and not doing things properly. So I just found out that our agenda and attachments did not go up on the website, so I will ask Ms. Kinsella or Ms. Porter to make sure that they do that right away in the morning. But what happened actually was we had a whole plan for a bunch of Title IX policies. I think we had eight of them. And then a federal court in Kentucky threw out all of the Title IX changes, so we scrapped all of that exactly one week ago. Or no, a week ago Wednesday. And so we had to then pull some other ones. And so unfortunately, we only had three other policies ready to move forward. I have a queue with a bunch more, but they're still being reviewed by district staff and attorneys and doing all of the background work. So the first one that we have tonight is Policy EF, which is the Joint Loss Management Committee.
Excuse me, Ms. Raymond.
Am I wrong?
It is Policy EB. In the agenda, it has EF, but in the...
Oh, you're right. EB.
Policy, my word is EB. So EB is the correct policy we're referencing.
Oh, we're having typos all over the place. Okay. EB, as I'm scrolling down, I see it. And so we had some public comments at a recent meeting that pointed out a couple of issues with this policy. And so Mr. Pasca sent it back and had it reviewed again by Mr. Lassard, and I don't know who else. And so we need to add the phrase in the first paragraph to ensure the Student Violence Prevention and Management Plan is followed. We did not make an attachment of the Student Violence Prevention and Management Plan, although that is, there's like a booklet, because it is not typically a public document. That's something that has security information and other information that we want to make sure our students and our staff are safe and secure and that not everything goes out to the public. I imagine that if you are a district employee, you probably can ask to see it, but it's not something we want the general public seeing.
That is something I agree with so wholeheartedly. But should we add a comment in here about the fact that the Student Violence Prevention and Management Plan is kept in buildings for employee use only?
I don't know. Mr. Pasca?
I mean, I think to the point that, a conversation that Ms. Raymond and I had and the feedback from our joint management from the city, we have the plan in place. It is being followed. There is an RSA that references what has to happen. And I think that plan kind of outlines what has to happen. So I think, you know, there was a conversation before about specifically listing the RSA. And I think within the legal references, it's referenced as 01 to 04. So I think we have that in place. I think the schools are meeting and following, meeting the guidelines for this joint management plan. So I think we feel that we're following the essence of the policy and what needs to occur without adding more things into the policy itself.
In this case, I want to make the recommendation that we move it straight to the full board. I don't think it needs a first reading and a second reading because it's already had those. And then this is just an adjustment based on the feedback that we got. So my motion is that we move it back to the full board and waive the first reading. So that when it shows up on the agenda for next week, it's under the second reading and ready to vote.
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next policy is JFABE, which is Education of Children in Foster Care. This is a new policy to the district. And we have pretty much taken it from the School Boards Association. And then the New Hampshire Department of Education Grant Management has asked us to make sure that we have all of the elements that are currently in this new policy.
Yes. We've been going through some recent audits. Actually, Policy JFABD is about education of unaccompanied youth. We did not have this specific policy in place about children in foster care. So we were advised by the state that we needed to adopt this policy as part of our audit proceedings. So again, Ms. Raymond, I would ask is as we go forward, could we waive the second reading and bring this to the full board so we can be in compliance with the recent audit we've gone through?
I'd like to do that because I like to be in compliance with audits. But I just want to make sure that we don't have any questions or concerns about the details of the policy. And I'm just going to go, I'm going to do a brief overview because people don't, the public don't have a copy of it. But it basically says that the board's intent is to remove barriers to the identification, enrollment, and retention of schoolchildren who are in foster care. Staff shall take reasonable steps to ensure that children in foster care are not segregated or stigmatized and that educational decisions are made in the best interest of those students. It defines what foster care is. It tells, establishes that the superintendent needs to designate staff members to be points of contact between DCYF, the Department of Education, other districts, and any other child welfare agencies. Because it's really common here in New Hampshire because we lack sufficient number of foster homes for kids to not be able to be placed within their same school district. I know DCYF tries, but it's really common for a child to be moved from Nashua, say, to a foster home or to a grandparents' house in another town. And so all of the agencies have to work together to decide what's best for the child as to whether, like if it's grandma, can grandma drive them back to Nashua? Or do they need to be going to Milford or wherever? If it's a couple of hours there, typically change schools. But we need to make sure that the kids continue to maintain their privacy. We don't want anyone introducing them as the new kid who's here because they're in foster care. That's unhelpful to everyone. And then it talks about how the decision-making process happens, about which district the child should be in. And it's not up to the school district. It's really up to the judge. Everyone kind of makes their case. It also establishes who pays for transportation. And I think that's it. There are a couple of bills, just for reference. There are a couple of bills at the State House right now. One that we just worked on today in my committee, which is Child and Family Law, that updates the definitions of educational surrogates. So foster parents sometimes need to be participating in the IEP process. Birth parents also need to be participating in the IEP process. And so that just really clarifies the lines on who makes the decisions. And then there's another one coming up that is one of my bills that talks about who pays for residential placements. Because right now, the sending local school district does. But I believe that if DCYF is involved and they place a child, that the sending school district shouldn't have to bear all of those residential care costs. Especially if it isn't a placement for their educational needs, it's a placement for their safety.
And those are the exact conversations that are occurring, the best interest determination meetings that we're having. And I think to Ms. Raymond's point, there's usually a lot of stakeholders around the table at that meeting based upon what we're dealing with. So you need to have this kind of clarify some of the work that we've already been doing. But also, it's a challenging situation with many of these individual situations to want to make sure what we're doing and what's best for the student involved and the family involved.
Yep. But our policy, this new policy, really talks about that we want to put the best interest of the child first in all of the decision-making that is happening here in the district. And just reminds our staff that that's what they do. And I don't really think anybody doesn't have that. If you're working in the school district, it's because you care about the best interests of children. Any questions about this? Go ahead, Ms. Darling.
This is probably going to seem arbitrary, but is there any way we can change the foster care point of contact to not be foster care POC? I don't know about you guys, but POC has become a pretty accepted abbreviation for person of color. And I know even though it does say in the first line of B that the superintendent shall designate a staff member to serve as the district's point of contact, the foster parent, the foster care POC. I just, I can't help but wonder if there's maybe a better term we could use?
Why don't we just make a change throughout the document to say foster care point of contact instead of making an abbreviation? Would that work?
I would love that, too.
I don't feel like it's an abbreviation that is used elsewhere. Like, you know what I mean? It's not like IDEA or, you know, one that everyone knows. So change foster care POC to foster care. Oh, my handwriting is terrible today. My apologies to Ms. Kinsella and Ms. Porter. Point of contact. It's been a very long day, and I've been taking notes all day. Okay. I think it's mostly in paragraph B.
But there's three in paragraph B, one in paragraph C, and two in paragraph D.
Oh, that's a lot. Okay, yeah. We'll just, we'll spell it out. Any other questions or concerns?
No.
No? Okay. So I move that we send JFABE to the full board as amended. I'm going to make an arrow to the amendment. And waive the first reading.
A second.
Okay. Anything else? No? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And this one, Policy KFA. I'm bringing this one forward. This is conduct on school property. I've been hearing a lot lately about issues with people's behaviors at our, not our necessarily, Nashua, but at our globally, as a, I don't know, community and country, school events. So sporting events, not so much like drama and stuff, but I can see it. I know Nashua U Soccer has had some issues with just people behaving badly towards players and referees and coaches. One of my neighbors had an issue where like parents were harassing their daughter who was acting as a referee at a children's soccer game. To the point where he felt like he had to go to the soccer games to make sure that adult people weren't yelling at kids being the referees. And so we have, our students are doing these things out in the public, which we can't do anything about. But here, umpires, referees, et cetera, have raised their prices. And it's becoming more and more difficult to find people to officiate our sporting events because of the behaviors that are happening. There was just something in the news the other day about a coach who got followed into the parking lot. And I feel like, I don't know. It's just been roaring for a long time. So I found this policy through the School Board Association. And the purpose of the policy is to establish some minimum standards for people when they are enjoying events and activities that are being put on by the school system. Because we want everyone to come and have fun and also feel safe. And we want people to be able to have their First Amendment rights, but not to behave in threatening or harassing ways. And we want to be able to protect our coaching staff and our students and our officials when people get out of line by saying, "Listen, you're violating our policies on behavior standards, and you need to leave." And I'm really not thinking that this is that parent who is really excited and is screaming like, "Defense!" and brings their D in their sign. I'm thinking these are the people that are, you know, really harassing the player who just missed the shot, and they're disappointed. Or the parent who is haranguing the coach to the point that it interferes with the game. So I think that this really lays out some guidelines about where our lines are. So you cannot, per this policy, injure, threaten, bully, harass, or intimidate students, staff members, officials, coaches, or engage in behaviors that are harassing or discriminatory in nature to any of our people playing or attending. So I don't want to have our community out there saying racist or sexist things to our students. It's not acceptable. You can't impede, delay, disrupt, or otherwise interfere with the school function, damage our property, deface the property. And then we also, smoke or tobacco, we have another policy for that. But just want to remind people that even if you're outside while you're on school property, you can't, you can't be drinking. Let's say you can't use devices or objects while threatening or coercing or intimidating people. You can't be wandering about the school property. If you're here for a basketball game, you can't be breaking into classrooms. You can't be using a drone without express permission. And you can't violate other laws. So if you do any of those things, district personnel can ask you to leave. So that's basically what this says. It just backs up our staff. And typically, we have a police officer at a lot of these things as well. But I don't, I don't want people who are unruly having to be arrested. We should be able to ask them to leave and have that conversation without it escalating to a crime.
No.
Does that make sense? I think so.
I think Ms. Raymond had brought this up later in the fall, so it had been in our queue. And ironically, our athletic director, Ms. Gingrich, had asked me if we were going to be moving forward with this updated policy. So I know, to Ms. Raymond's point, it's really not just about athletics, although athletics probably is the main impetus behind pushing this policy forward, not just here in Nashua, but why there was an overhaul of the policy and our kind of revisiting of the policy in the state. So it certainly just gives us as a district some more support for our student athletes, our coaches, and our families who are watching the game. And just provide some oversight of kind of, you know, I don't want to use common sense policy, but certainly some common sense policies that should be in practices that shouldn't be in place when we're watching our students' games.
Yep. Any questions or thoughts? I know your children are athletes.
Well, one of them is. Yeah, no. No, I think this is a good policy to have. I've coached. I was an umpire as a kid, so I definitely know how difficult that can be when you have an adult bearing down on you and you're 14, 15 years old. It's not a good thing to have. And this is good to have for just, again, for the community to know that we want people to come out and enjoy these events. But you have to be respectful of all the people involved. So I think it's a good policy to have.
Anyone else?
I really appreciate number 10, the operate either upon or over school property, a drone or other unmanned aircraft. I don't know why drones freak me out as much as they do. I think I watch too much Criminal Minds, but I really appreciate that. Should we add in, without express permission, is there a situation that you guys can foresee where we would be like, "Yeah, no, a drone would be cool to use for that"?
I mean, I could definitely envision, I could see it being an educational thing because we do have a drone program here in Nashua. And I can also see, like, I'm thinking of football or lacrosse wanting to use a drone to film practices or to film games. I assume you'd need permission from the other team as well to use in like a highlight reel or...
Sure. And you see more of that even...
A booster club or something.
You know, more, you see a lot of high school reels and stuff where they show, you know, it's definitely shot from a drone.
Right. So like, I'm not personally having an objection to it if there's prior permission given. And so maybe we want to add after 10 without prior permission from administration? I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. So edit.
And even with that, it should be someone who's trained in, you know, using said drone, so.
Right. Don't you have, do you have to have a license?
My son took the drone class, and I know there was not a lot of drone flying due to the regulations of airspace in around south.
Right.
So...
And we have the airport here, like, you can't...
Right. So there's certain, there's definitely more restrictions over certain areas of Nashua than maybe other towns have.
Do we need to have it in the policy that you have to have drone training? Or do we want to leave that up to the administrator in charge? Because I can see this going to anyone from the school principal to the athletic director to a coach. As long as someone is in charge, the administration decides, "I'm okay with it."
I'm glad Ms. Darling brought this up because I think it's an excellent point. And I think as long as the prior permission of the administration, I think of some of the, you know, when I'm online looking at the highlights of the evolution of the Stellows Stadium process, we're getting pictures of drone footage of how that is progressing forward. I can certainly see, you know, our video club maybe perhaps utilizing something. But I think it certainly would put people at ease if there was some announcement or some type of things made. You know, a drone will be footage from the Nashua Video Department to promote lacrosse or whatever it might be. So I think kind of puts people at ease, "Why is this flying around?"
Yeah, that's good to have. Definitely to let people feel at ease that, you know, "Hey, this is legitimate where..."
This is not Criminal Minds.
Right. Well, I don't want, I mean, the other side of that is I don't necessarily want someone out there with their drone flying over our kids as they are out there doing their practices.
No.
And it's just some random person filming students. Like, that is not okay. Because I, you know, I consider that still part of, the parents have permission, have to give permission on whether or not children's images can be used for things. And I'm using children globally to mean up to 18.
Sure.
Sorry, teenagers. All right. So edit is to change, to add to number 10 without prior permission from administration. Anything else? Any comments from the audience members? I wonder if there is, the comment from the audience was what's the definition of harassment? And do we need to add the legal definition? What is the legal definition of harassment?
Aggressive pressure or intimidation. It's a noun.
Engage, yeah, I don't, yeah.
I was going to say, and I mean, even that definition seems really broad, too.
Right.
When you mention it like that and...
Yeah, I'm telling you, there are people who...
I think there are people who are going to push the line on this.
Hey, I only know this from our students. They use the word harassment all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's just taking that out completely. Maybe it's just engaged in behaviors that are discriminatory.
But I think you can be harassing without being discriminatory. You know what I mean?
Right.
Because if, you know, if you have, you know, a white man, you know, haranguing another white man, is that discriminatory? Probably not. Yep.
It's something to think about because I know that people protest outside school board meetings with signs that you wouldn't want to put yourself in.
But I think this is not talking about school board meetings. This is specifically talking about a school-sponsored activity. Whereas a school board meeting is a... And I would argue that, I would argue that you don't have full freedom of speech in a school-sponsored activity. And I think that there are court cases that bear that as well.
Right. You can't come to a drama show and just scream out various things because you have the freedom of speech.
So, but I definitely think that there will be pushback. And this is one that I don't, that I think we have to have a first reading and a second reading, especially since it didn't go up Friday. Maybe even have two first readings so that the public has a chance to
To comment.
read it and then provide us with feedback as well.
I did look up here, freedom of speech in schools and the AI overview, which, I mean, we can all say, take it with a grain of salt, it deserves. It says, "The First Amendment of the United States Constitution protects student freedom of speech in public schools. However, schools can limit speech that disrupts the school environment or violates school policies."
Right.
And it's marking the ACLU as its source.
More specific wording than...
I would because ultimately, after-school hours, it's free advice.
All right. So I guess for, I think that there is some element of discussion and professional development that administration's going to have to have with people, coaches, et cetera, to come up with where the lines are on this, right? Like, if someone is protesting up at the traffic circle, that's not on school property. That's very different. But if they're out there in the crowd and causing a distraction to the game, to me, that's disrupting. And so for me, it's, we really have to be specific. And I think that's why I like that there are lots of things listed here. Because it's not enough, like, again, you can get very excited and be screaming out like, "Defense!" or "Come on, shoot that ball!" or whatever. Like, there's lots of coaches in the stands, right?
Every single one.
Right? And sometimes that's annoying, but it's not necessarily disruptive to the play. And it is not, it's not designed, it's not intimidating to the other players.
Right.
The way this is written, when I try to look at it from a troublemaker point of view, my concern would be certain individuals in our community that have a habit of protesting some really hateful ways and things that as long as they are doing so in a nondescript, non-this-person kind of way, they can have a sign that says, "My opinion is XYZ." But let's face it, those are going to be signs that we do not want to ever see at our schools.
Right. But I don't, I don't think that this policy would necessarily preclude those unless it falls under bully, harass, or intimidating a student, staff member, or official. So if they're, if they are holding signs or otherwise because they are singling out a particular student or staff member because they belong to a protected class, then that would be outlawed. If they're just saying in general, you know, "I hate this, you know, I hate this one thing," well, we can't stop them from doing that. I know there's individuals who wear sandwich boards at Nashua Back-to-School Night and carry signs saying, "I'm filming you." Oh, yeah. Or come up to the thing.
Do you see this can of worms you opened with your advice? It's got us thinking, and I'm glad you know what I was talking about.
You can come to the...
No, it's fine.
You're like, "No."
There aren't many people here. No, I was just thinking, you know, we have that event where we have the big job fair. And in the past, people have come and protested that or picketed that in the past. And you have that information about impede and delay. This is just topics for discussion for you to consider. That, that has happened in the past. And I'm a president of the teachers' union. We've done that. And, you know, that would be, I would be concerned if this was used in that effect, so.
And I think that's, I think that's a valid point because you are allowed to protest. Like, there's nothing in here that stops people from protesting.
And it becomes a thing of protest, you know, like protest inside a venue or outside a venue. If you're protesting outside a venue, you're legally obliged to do so. But if you're coming into the venue...
Right. If you're disrupting us putting on a play because you don't like the play... Right, if you're disrupting us putting on a play because you don't like the play, well, that's very different, I think.
And I think it's also about targeting individual or individuals with the words or comments. And I think that's where, when you, when you look at it from the scope of, of an athletic event, you know, there is game management that our athletic directors and their coordinators put in place to make sure everyone is treated fairly at such events. And that includes, you know, you know, if there is a chant that's, could be considered targeting someone, that those chants are stopped. You know, it's not just, you know, the example that Ms. Raymond gave. It's when you're specifically targeting some of those individuals. So I think it's broad enough there to cover that. And I think it gets more specific into specific harassment or discriminatory in nature in number two.
Right, and people are absolutely still, even if, whether, if we adopt this policy or not, you're still allowed to protest the school board meetings whenever you want because this does not cover school board meetings. Because we are not a school-sponsored event or activity. I would prefer that you not interrupt or impede the school, the school board meetings, but we've had that happen.
No, ah, we've always had such a polite audience.
I'm really focused on the kids' activities.
Sure, it just, the, and that would be fine if that's what it was, what the language said. But it just says, you know, "School-approved" or "prom sponsored" activity. It doesn't say "student."
Maybe we need to add "students."
That would be, I'd feel more comfortable if it was that.
I wonder what language would be appropriate to indicate? Because, because it's not just plays and sports, but another school-sponsored activity would be open house night.
It still involves students, though.
And parent-teacher conference night. Like, most people don't take their kids to parent-teacher conference night. But you also can't show up to parent-teacher conference night and start harassing and threatening and intimidating staff.
Right.
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable if this, if we could figure out a way to narrow this to events where students are present.
What about the harassing a teacher during parent-teacher conference night? Or an administrator, because I'm familiar with that happening.
Again, harassing is a very general term. We've, I, I mean, I got so many stories, I just, we kind of, we're adults. I mean, you know, as long as it's not violent, I mean, I, I mean, I, you know what I mean? I, I just, I, for me, I, I would be more comfortable if this, if this particular policy... I think what we have in place is okay. But I think for this particular policy, I think you would, you'd be better, the better bet would just to focus on student-sponsored events.
I mean, it could be even student and student-related, and that could cover parent-teacher conferences.
No, okay, hold on, let me go back.
Yeah, I mean...
I'd say that would be smart because the Supreme Court has said many, many times that they believe that school board meetings are considered closer to school-sponsored events than they are legislative sessions. So just in order to be in line with that thinking, that and all I can think of right now is, I'm pretty sure that my son as a student has probably broken a lot of these rules in the average school day as a middle schooler. Again, God bless every middle school teacher out there, I don't know how you do it.
Right, so I think the point of this is, we already have policies that govern behavior of students during the school day. This is really about those co-curricular.
I think it goes back to that opening, the, the general statement and purpose, which has kind of a broad umbrella upon which it's, this policy is resting. And I think when you go back to that, talk about a minimum standard of conduct upon a school district property, enduring school-sponsored events and activities that will provide the best educational climate for the students, encourage the participation in the educational process by the general public, protect the investment of the public in both the educational process and the physical plan in which it is conducted. So I, I think the essence is, is captured in that general statement and purpose.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm feeling like, as I'm rereading that, that there are events that happen during the school day where people come in. All right.
Yes.
I definitely think we should, when this goes to the full board, make sure that we bring these notes to the board and say, like, how do you guys think, feel?
Well, I guess the question is, at this point, we can do the edit number, to the number 10, and then keep it and talk about it some more in February. Or we can do the edits number 10 and then bring it forward to a first reading and see what other feedback we get from the general public, and then bring it back if we need to.
Yeah, I think a first reading is the way to go.
Definitely. I like that.
I would agree.
It probably would take longer because then it, well, I don't think it would take longer. If we have our meeting on Monday, then we could potentially get feedback, if people know it's coming. I feel like the whole reason we went to two readings is because we weren't getting a lot of feedback until after the meeting. People would be like, "Oh, hey, I see you just approved that. I have thoughts." All right, so let's, let's move it on for our first reading with the edit regarding the droning to add without prior permission. So, I'm sorry, let me say that better. Move to send to full board. First reading with the edit. Oh, I'm gonna write "as amended," "as amended." And then I'll make my little arrow to the number 10, adding the prior permission from administration for using a drone. Okay, any other thoughts? Anyone want to second it?
Second.
Sorry, I got stuck trying to understand one of the paragraphs because I kept accidentally rereading the same sentence. So his second stands, yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll do that and we'll see what the public says. And I apologize, usually I have more, but I don't. I don't even have...
Do you have an update on the social media policy that is gonna be coming up?
In that, it is with our new, oh, what's his title? It's with Pam.
Social media coordinator.
Yes, so the social media coordinator is reviewing it. He will have some updates for me, hopefully for February.
That is the goal, we've been working, we worked on something earlier this month. He's gonna bring, I would like to bring it back to have some discussions with Central Office and then bring it forward to Ms. Raymond in preparation, hopefully, for February presentation.
Nice, and the dress code that the students were going to bring to us, am I gonna see that at some point this next year? Or did that stall out?
Maybe, so we had a meeting with the students in December. I had some quibbles with some of the language that they used in the dress code. Because the, the original genesis of it came from a student, Elizabeth Brunel, who felt that the dress codes were unfairly targeting girls. And after it went through all of the student senate and stuff, it continued to target girls. So I asked them to go back and look at that a little bit closer. And then also, they hadn't run it by the middle schools. And when we polled, we had a meeting with the high school principals and the prior student reps. And when we polled the current handbooks, each middle school had a different dress code listed, which was also different than the elementary school. And so we asked them to bring it to the middle school as well and get some middle school input, and then come back to us with a little bit more.
Nice, my favorite rule for, in my house, that my kids don't listen to enough is you have to be covered from collarbone to calf. I don't know what it is with boys today.
Right, so I think, I don't know, I found one that I really liked that was like from armpit to, you know, thigh or something.
Yeah.
And it was, you know, really gender neutral. But I think some of the things that, that the goals, I think that they have is to make it so that if a student goes from any one school to another school in our district, that they don't need different clothing, right? It's also to relieve some of the burden on our staff from policing kids' outfits, right? Because that's weird and uncomfortable. And to make sure that we are having kids who come to school dressed for learning for themselves, right? And so they're not missing class time because of other people's values and morals. Parents really get to decide for each, their own child, what they're, what is acceptable in their house. And so we need to make sure that we aren't imposing our will on other people's kids.
Absolutely.
So, it's sticky. Sticky, so I don't know when that will come back. But for now, we, we just have really wildly disparate ones. Like, Pennsyl doesn't let you wear hoodies, but the other middle schools let you wear hoodies. And I'm just thinking, personally as a mom, like, I don't want to come get my kid because they're wearing a hoodie. And I don't want them to be cold either. So I don't, I don't know. I think we need to get, I, I think we need to get the middle schools involved because I imagine that there are reasons behind some of the rules that exist, and I don't know what they are.
I say, I wonder if no hoodies is like a way of trying to get kids to wear jackets.
I don't know.
I can't imagine it's working.
No.
I don't know, but I don't also, like I said, I don't want to have a kid who's been going to fairgrounds, but their family moves and they end up at Pennsyl and half their wardrobe is no longer acceptable.
Is that even, is that enforced at Pennsyl?
I don't know, and if we're not enforcing it, what's the point?
Existing from previous issues?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think to Ms. Raymond's point, there are little nuances that are different from each school. And I think the goal, I think where the, the high school students did a really nice job is try to provoke some consistency at the high school level. And I appreciate that work that occurred. But that, I don't think enough work had been done to bring in all levels into the conversation and what's appropriate there. So that's where the conversation stopped and talked about what the next steps need to be if we're gonna have, continue to have some of those conversations.
Tom, so that's where we are on that. And then, so I have KD, KDR, which is social media, to come. The dress code one still, which is JICA when it comes back. And I don't think I have any other requests from people. I do have a list here on my queue regarding whether, whether or not we need to have a policy on fees for activities, sports, and parking, which I will bring up to Dr. Andre when we start talking about the budget. I have a meeting with him next week because apparently I'm doing the budget chair, too.
We, internally, we've had some conversations about that, that policy and adjustments that need to be made. But I think that's a conversation that needs some more people at the table regarding, you know, probably some of the high school people and as far as kind of, you know, the usage of the building and what they are seeing, our business office for, for what that entails. And just to, I don't think it'd been updated in, in, in certainly four or five years. So I think there's an opportunity for us to look to see what's appropriate as we kind of plan this going forward.
Okay, great.
And when, I, I did have a couple of teachers ask me about cell phone policy. They had concerns, and I know there was a, a survey conducted of the teachers.
Oh, I forgot about that, sorry.
Mm-hmm, that's okay. So I, that's just something that might be coming up because it's, it's an ongoing thing with the cell phones. And, and it is a problem that's hard to figure out. But it is something that teachers are still having to deal with.
There are, and there is, the governor mentioned it in her address, her inaugural address last week, two weeks ago, oh, gosh. And there is a bill, if I can find it, HB 131, that has been filed, but I don't have a... Oh, the public hearing for HB 131 is on this Thursday, the 23rd, at 2:00 PM in the Legislative Office Building, Rooms 205 and 207. And that bill is an act requiring school boards to develop and enact policies regarding cellphone use in school. And it, the bill says, "School boards shall develop and adopt a policy governing student cellphone use. Such policies shall restrict the use of personal, student personal cellphones during class instruction without educator approval." It says, "Student, school district policies shall not prohibit students with disabilities from using a device to support their learning as identified by their IEP or 504 plan."
I'm glad about that line because that's, my son had the IEP that allowed him to use his phone for using Siri.
Yep, so I, I'm planning on going to that hearing. I invite anybody else in the public who's interested to go to the hearing or watch it on the internet. I have some questions about it, too. Like, what if, how long does it take to get an IEP? What if your child is just diagnosed with diabetes and they need their phone to control their pump? I don't know how long, like, how long does it take to get your 504 for that? You know, what about if the teacher wants to use, what's that app? Mr. Hoffman probably knows. There's an app where they ask a question and then you like, you like enter it in your phone, it creates a word cloud, you know? So, so I have some questions about it. But as of right now, unless they amend the bill, the bill isn't to prohibit cell phones, it's to...
It's to establish.
Establish policies. So, yeah, so I think, for me personally, I want to see what the state says before we write a local one. Because I don't want to write a local one and then
Have to change it.
change it in three months.
That would be fun.
So, yeah, I'm on it. I forgot about it, but I was on it. Anything else? If not, people are welcome to email me, and I will add it to the queue. Sometimes I can't do it right away in February because it has to go through admin and all the people that they talk to. Right?
Sounds good.
Then I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Awesome. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so we are adjourned at 6:50.